Seven o'clock, we're gonna go ahead and start the meeting. So he's open our meeting with the plan. Ryan, you're going to do what the plan?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Hey Allison, roll call please.
Thank you, Mark. Joe Boyd.
Here.
Kevin Kelly.
Here.
Phil Morris.
Here.
Lynn Norris here, Ashley Richard here, Allison Baker here.
All right, can I say on our agenda, consent agenda includes the minutes from our previous meeting and the payment of the bills. Were there any questions on the minutes from our previous meeting? Uh, were there any questions on any of the bills, payment of the bills? Uh, do we have a motion to approve consent agenda?
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'm second.
Any final questions or discussions? Matt Allison, roll call.
Joe Boyd.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Phil Morris.
Yes.
Lynn Norris, yeah, Ashley Richard, yes, Allison Baker, yeah.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna make a minor change. I would like to talk about Scott Argus as a member of the planning commission, get that taken care of now. Scott has some business to conduct tonight, so I'm gonna move him, so we can get that taken care of. I recommend Scott for the planning commission. Scott has been a longtime resident of Hudson, he's been a lot of good for the community, he's given us a lot of web support. And he probably even, uh, you helped us set up the initial website for Phil to, didn't you?
It still helps.
And we thank you for that, so I think he'll be a great addition to the planning commission. And I recommend him for that position. And are there any questions or discussions that anybody would like to know?
What is your background, Scott?
So I work in IT, I actually work over at Carl Broman, I've been there for twenty years. I'm the director of the department. And prior to that, I worked for ten years at other hospitals, I was up in the major part area. Ten years as well working in IT, so. And as Dave mentioned, I run the annual Village Hudson garage sale website. Also in addition to, I think, working with Mark back in the day, refresh the website, also support the Village now.
Sure. Thanks.
Sure.
Scott has attended the last planning commission meeting as a resident and had some good suggestions for us. And I think he'll be a great addition to the planning commission. So if the trustees agree, entertain a motion to select Scott as a member of the planning commission.
I make a motion to select Scott Argus as a member of the planning commission?
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any final questions or discussion? Allison, roll call.
Joe Boyd.
Yes.
Kevin Kelly.
Yes.
Phil Morris.
Yes.
Lynn Norris, yeah, Ashley Richard, yes, Allison Baker, yeah.
Scott, thank you very much. Where are you in town, so?
I am missing your name.
I said my name.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of planning commission member.
The duties of planning commission member.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
I don't really care.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott, I appreciate it, look forward to working with you.
You too, yeah, thank you for adjusting your schedule as well, so I appreciate that.
Yep. Okay, so we don't have anyone in the audience here tonight, Sarah, is there anybody online?
No.
All right, I am going to skip the sales tax presentation since we did it last night. I do wanna add a few things, I did the finite math today along with Phil, we got to look at some of the numbers. And the state levies a 6.25% sales tax rate, the municipalities get 20% of that. So I had estimated 1% of the sale goes to Hudson. On a thousand dollar sale, it would actually be $12.50 instead of $10. So, and a few dollars off of my estimates. At the high end, where I estimated $190,000 additional revenue, it would be about $160,000, based on a $200,000 revenue. So I overstated that a little bit, I wanna get that clarified. And Phil and I did all kinds of numbers and discussions with property and sales tax today, it doesn't get any easier.
Yeah, Dave, I think you said $200,000, but were you saying that you currently face upon $2 million dollars? You get $160,000, is that?
I, I don't think I said anything about $2 million. We, we currently get $200,000 of, about $200,000 of sales tax revenue.
Okay.
We would get about $160,000 additional dollars in revenue if we pass a 1% sales tax.
So, so back to, so basically, yesterday we had that 1% sales tax, we generate about $190 to $200,000.
Yeah.
Are you revising that to the amount?
No.
Oh, you're not?
No.
Okay.
I'm just revising the amount that we would get if we passed a 1% sales tax.
You're revising that to 160?
Right, when, instead of 180.
I think he is revising that.
Yeah, okay, okay, got it.
So, I'm not revising the 2 million, I'm sorry, the 200,000, just the amount we would get if we passed the sales tax.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Okay, and I also wanted to point out on the last slide that I talked about, that I didn't, that I didn't talk about, as far as federal budget cuts go.
One real quick, how much did we say we were losing before? Didn't we say we lost $80,000 when they stopped giving us some tax from grocery?
No, there was a lot less than that.
Is it $8,000?
There was the grocery tax that the state took away.
Yeah.
And all that money had been going to the village or the municipalities.
Yeah.
And Sarah, what was it, about three or four thousand?
Oh, okay.
I don't remember, it wasn't much at all.
Very small. Would it be under $10,000, you think?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure it was under $10.
In $10,000, okay.
Yeah, we couldn't give the exact amount, but we could get percentages or pie chart of how much of our sales went to different businesses.
Okay, okay.
And that's how she was able to determine what loss we would have from taking away that grocery tax. That was a, a bigger loss for bigger towns than what's.
Yeah, this is a lot more than what I can.
Yeah, yeah, this is still major. So on my last slide yesterday, I didn't spend much time on, if the federal government continues doing cutting, and if they cut what goes to the states, then the states will probably cut what goes to municipalities. So in fiscal year 2022, 26.7% of the Illinois government revenues came from federal transfers. So I don't know if that will, I don't, couldn't find anything more recent than 2022. So I'm guessing it's still about a quarter of the state revenues come from the federals. So if the federals cut what they send to the states, the states are probably gonna cut what they send to the municipalities. So I would see possible cuts in our revenues from that also. Can't say for sure, but it's quite possible our, our other revenues could be cut because the federals might cut the revenues of the state. So.
When is that allocation, uh, of the revenue?
I don't know when the state, when the federal allocations are made, I don't know.
We don't, we don't, we won't know before we get into our budget year?
Probably not. No, we, since we're doing budgeting this month, we won't know. But if they do cut, it will probably affect future beyond next year, but I don't know there would be a big impact on next year. But that's my own personal speculation.
When do we get money? Do we get it every month, or do we get it?
Every month.
Every month we get money, there's, there could be a month where it drops or something.
Most of them come monthly, there's a few that don't, a few small ones.
Yeah, the, the majority of like the bigger is monthly.
Okay.
State income tax, uh, property tax, those are all monthly, aren't they?
The property tax is different.
Okay, that's right.
That comes out as it's taken in basically. But the, like, state income tax, the sales tax, that's all monthly, MFT is monthly, um, yeah, so all of that is monthly. That's it, it's our property.
Property tax, we probably get two big ones a year after people pay their property taxes.
There's usually about six dispersments of that throughout the year.
Okay, so does anybody have any other questions on sales tax presentation we did? Along with that, uh, do we wanna put it on our budget, on our agenda for our first budget meeting? As a possible voting item?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll make sure we get it on the agenda then for our first budget meeting. Okay, next item on the agenda is assistance hearing, uh, there's no one here, so reports are me. We did the Scott election as far as the planning commission goes. I thought the feedback we got from the sales tax presentation last night was very good. Think that there was some support for it, and I think the support, uh, people would rather have a sales tax than a property tax increase. With that feeling. The one thing we can't provide is any data on how much money Hudson residents spend in Hudson versus non-Hudson residents. There's no way to get that data, so it's hard to estimate the actual impact that Hudson residents, so. Overall, I think the meeting went well, and I wanna thank everyone for being here last night and participating and being part of this discussion, so.
I always wanna thank you for creating that together, a lot of work, a lot of legwork, to our point, and scheduling the meeting too, to discuss it, appreciate that.
Thank you. Dave, status of the DCO grant, uh, Sarah has the paperwork all submitted, I don't know if we've heard back.
She emailed back with just a couple of things she wanted done, just a little bit differently, like they did last time, that's already resubmitted, now it's just a matter of waiting until it goes through the process.
Okay, so we haven't got final approval to start yet?
No, not yet, we don't have, we don't have the signed agreement yet.
We have everything in there.
Everything is there, yep.
So we're just waiting on the approval. And the two projects we are doing is, we are lining two tiles, and we are also putting in a sidewalk along Southwest Street from Broadway to Pearl, 'cause that street has a lot of pedestrian traffic for people walking to school, and it's also got a big killing that makes it real hard to see. Can't even see cars over that hill, so I think it'll be a great safety improvement. The cost will exceed the amount of the DCO grant, so we will need to look at either using tech to pay for the balance of the sidewalk or allocating money out of our general fund to pay for the balance. So we'll discuss that part of it at budget meeting. On the sewer study, um, I have sent requests to get the support from our state representatives, and I'm waiting to hear back from them, that's the only major accomplishment since the last meeting. So Danny Ango would be next, Danny emailed, he's not here tonight. Joe, you wanna cover the water stats, you have that?
I, I do, he says everybody's at $83,000 a day, $2.3 million for the month. Um, I'm not sure what, what Hydrate Mark found at the park, was it leaking or something really bad?
Yeah, someone, I, I discovered it was, when it was still cold out, I think maybe a week or so ago. Being that I was a trained observer, Joe, I was like, where's all this ice coming from? And, and someone had to go with that, with that, like faucet, it's like an outlet by one of the dugouts. And it was just, it was, someone had tampered with it. So then I called Danny and he came on and locked it down.
Those don't freeze in the winter, those are on, I'm surprised.
Yeah, yeah, I know, it was on, and it was stealing everywhere.
So he thought maybe that was contributed to the 50% water loss?
Probably, 'cause it had been on for a while, I'm sure.
He mentioned stuff about Sintos uniforms, I wonder if we need to provide some money to employees to buy clothes or something?
No, he, he had them, they called him, I think kind of hounded him, wanted to come out. He met with them, and then they came back to meet with him, and I go, the cost is, it's more for like a bigger company. It's not, they, they already have clothing out, so it's, it's good. This was just a matter of like him seeing if it was a better, it's definitely, yeah, it's like $600 a month for cleaning supplies and toilet paper. So, we just need to try to tell them now.
Okay. You started off as a detention basis, Phil, do you want to say anything about detention basis?
Yeah, Danny just kinda horsing around up there with tobacco, and we've got a new bucket, the white bucket that we got, grading work, and he's messing around with that, uh, starting in a certain area. And he'd be working the dirt from the East Street back, he's gonna make a mound of black dirt on the east side of the detention area. Kinda go at it a little bit at a time, so. Once the ground gets firm enough, he'll start getting the dump truck in there and hauling the dirt over to where he wants to pile it up, so.
He did tell me that the engineer told him that as long as he does less than an acre at a time, we don't have to get a ton of permits.
Right.
And if you dig it more than an acre at a time, you have to get a ton of rents.
Yeah.
So his plan is to do an acre at a time, maybe an acre a year, I don't know.
Yeah, he, I see he's got some cones set up, I'm sure it's not major that off, that's like.
Don't go over the cones.
That's like three acres right there, so he has to do it in three different sections.
So that sounds like a good plan, so, uh, that's all he had, I think.
Okay, do we have additional questions for Danny, we need to check with him, he's calling tomorrow.
These are the new utility bowls are going up.
Yeah, saw that, and they're running lines, I think, now. We don't have a completion date, do we?
No. They didn't even give us a hard, like, start date, it was kind of just dependent on their workload and then the weather.
Imagine the village, the power of the village and some of the downtown businesses will be shut off when they transfer it.
They didn't communicate that they would be doing that, but I'm not sure.
And the other thing, yeah, I'm gonna try to take over from Lynn, since Lynn's leading, that's right, Lynn's our HR person.
Yeah.
Lynn's definitely leading us?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, um, you know, starting your artwork and advertising for your person and stuff, I'll work with Sarah, I'll work, so. He's excited about that, he said.
Okay, uh, next on our agendas from our village, Marshall, Chief Duddy?
All right, everybody should have a copy of the, of the report as usual, the top part is the hardest statistics. When you look down through the narrative, you can see that there was training that we attended. The, uh, the main things I wanna point out is that we did, I did meet with our radio vendor, Beck Tech. And Beck Tech, um, as you see down later on, um, we had to have our five portable radios retuned. Every two or three, maybe four years, your radios have to be retuned, especially the portables. They get out of sync with the towers, and eventually they, they just don't communicate well, and we had some issues. And so did some other rural agencies. So Beck Tech came out and retuned our, our radios, so they work much better than they did before. Um, you can see the reports that we took, we took four, uh, reports during the, uh, during the month of February. I completed our annual Way Forward Act, that's an annual report that I have to fill out to be filling out in general. Basically talking about if we had any interactions with ICE, which we did not. Uh, but I still have to fill out the report and check all the boxes and everything else like that. Uh, Officer Micah Hurd, he began his field training with Officer Lane on February 18th. He should complete his training on March 8th, and then he'll be ready for solo patrol on March 11th. Uh, he completed all the required training that was set forth by the Illinois law enforcement training and standards board to reactivate his police officer certification. So he, he got that back and he's good to go. Four golf cart permits were issued, we have nine so far this year. We issued two solicitor permits to Sunrun, and they're out and about. And we issued three solicitor permits for Freedom Forever Solar Company. And then we did our stop sign details and our school bus details and the like. So any questions about the?
The rabid animal, so does that have to be reported to the animal control if it's a rabid?
No.
Or do they test it as rabid, or do they? Is it just kind of?
And, and that was the report because that, you don't have any other code to use for that, to be quite honest.
Okay.
So in my opinion, it was not rabid, it.
It was in my backyard.
Yeah, it, it, it was initially a rabid skunk call, but it turned out that trap that was set, trap of possums set, now there still is a weird skunk around and around, okay? In the detention area, but they actually caught a possum. The possum, in my opinion, didn't, was not rabid. I think it had this temper and, because it wasn't aggressive, it was just very slow, they act like they're drunk. But anytime that we dispatch an animal, fancy way of saying we shot it, um, we do a report because we, you know, we shot our firearm. So, um, anyway, so we, we took care of that, but yes, the, the hunt for the, the, yes, fungus, so.
Still on. Sorry. Should we laugh? No, I laughed a lot, it's been entertaining.
Any other questions?
Does anyone have any questions or comments for Chief Duddy?
I did wanna say that, um, Officer Micah, that I work at the schools too, and he had an incident at the school that he reported to. And, um, the guy got really good feedback, that he was very wonderful there and handled it really well.
Yes, yes, we had, we had to respond to the school for an incident. Uh, no report taken because there was no crime.
No.
But yes, yes, he, he was, and I talked to the principal. Uh, Michael will work out very well in our, in our community, he fits in well, he's, he's been a small town person. He gets out of police, a small, a small village, so we're gonna work out very well, so. Thanks for bringing that up. Uh, you see the street light report, nothing's changed, I was at first almost ecstatic when I saw them on power poles.
They got it after quick.
And then Officer Lane told me he stopped and talked to them, they said, no, we're not replacing lights, we're just replacing the poles. So I don't know why, when they replaced the pole, they didn't put a new light on it, but they did put a real light on it, so.
They replaced some of these poles here?
Yeah.
And they didn't put a new light up?
Correct.
When I was their job.
So first I was like, oh boy, they're trying to get, no, but it's the same ones that you seen the last couple months. And every month we send Amrin the list and ask them to repair them, so we'll see. Um, EMA, so you didn't hear the sirens go off today, and there's a reason when, um, when that first Tuesday of the month, if there's any like severe weather like we had today, with a lot of rain, a lot of clouds and some wind, just don't wanna confuse the people, so we don't set the sirens off, so that's why you did it. We may pick a time, maybe in a week or so, if I have enough time, to put out a notice to everybody, you know, on our Facebook page and everything, and we can test them ourselves. But I'll pick, if I do that, it'll be a nice bright sunny day where clearly it'll be a test. So we don't wanna keep you from.
There's a good call on that testing sirens.
I, I got mine, could I ask, there's a question on the sirens, so I know that you brought up like last month, I think it was something with an issue with the sirens, and some person was supposed to help, and I think they work for the county, EMA, and they, is there kind of a, I mean, is there any status update on that? Uh, on, on, can they, or the sirens?
The status update is that the siren here at the main, you know, our main sign right here, you notice it works, the siren works, okay? So it works for the new whistle, however, it still does not have an antenna on it to work as a tornado siren, or I should say a, a severe weather siren. Now, he was supposed to come out today to work on it, but obviously, so I'll get with the EMA coordinator again and request his services, 'cause that's how it works. When we have to have our sirens worked or repaired, we go through the EMA coordinator of the county who has a vendor, and this is the vendor that we.
Good question, any additional questions for Chief? If not, thank you, Chief Duddy. Moving on on the agenda, our next item is the planning budget contracts, and employee trustee Lynn?
I have anything now, just see everybody next week for project session. Sorry.
All right, anybody that's resenting Lynn because of her tan, I understand, so.
It's all sorry.
All right.
You got that, sorry.
So, and that meeting is next week on the 13th at 7:00 PM?
Yeah.
Here, over there, right?
Yeah.
Mark, have you got that on the calendar for budget meeting?
Yes, for the conference, yes.
Thank you. All right, after Lynn, we have streets, uh.
Bill? I have nothing.
All right, next is ordinance and zoning, trustee Ashley?
I have nothing.
Okay, uh, there is a planning commission meeting this month, isn't there?
Yep, there is.
Is that?
The third Monday, um, and we'll get an agenda out, but.
And trustees are invited to attend if you want to, okay? We still have one opening on the planning commission, we now have four members, and I think we got a pretty solid group going there, so. All right, next is police, trustee Kevin?
I have nothing.
Nothing to report? Water department, Joe?
Uh, I have nothing, and I did not deal with, uh, the call-in procedure thing, I did get an example from Pat, I haven't really sent it around, so I will do that. That's all I have.
Okay, um, question for you, Joe, and I may, uh, I quoted something correct in the slide. The estimate for replacing our old mains in town, was that about $6 million?
Yeah, that's the, yeah.
So, so that's where that number came from. Are those called transite?
Yeah, transite or, or concrete asbestos, either, transite is a brand name or something, or.
Oh, okay.
We can get other concrete asbestos types other than transite, but that's, that's the best name, yeah.
So Joe, is that like, I know that Danny talked about the service, like replacing the service pieces? Is that's, that's outside of those, those are just actually the mains in the old part of town, right? I mean, they have undersized and old.
Yeah, and the, the whole outside of Old Town does have modern PVC six inch, but everything in between is small and this asbestos concrete, it may or may not be a problem. I think I, I think I said, we met with an engineering guy, and he's like, you know, if you're not having a problem with them, you probably just wait until you either have a problem with them, or, or the federals come out and say, you must replace these, and then hopefully they show up with some money too. So I mean, the current plan or whatever is, probably just wait, I mean, he, he told us there's other towns that are having a problem with them, that they're actually breaking and stuff. And you don't know if that's from ground shifting or what that's from, but you know, he's like, if you're not having a problem, you really don't have to do anything, so. I don't know, I don't, I mean, Danny thinks we should start a fund and start saving for it, it's $6 million. I don't know. I mean, you know, it would take, it would take a while to save $6 million, but at the same time, maybe the federals come out and give us the money to do it in five years?
Did the engineer say like, what would be, I mean, like, I know he said, don't do anything unless there's a problem, but like, would it be like a, hey, this is the, if you're gonna replace it, this would be like the location, or this would be the, uh, you know, maybe there's a priority of, you know?
Well, there's, there's.
Of like, is that a little bit, I think Danny said there was like a three inch main, ones is really undersized for the community, things like that, or?
Yeah, we've got some different sized ones, so you'd probably do the smaller ones first. But it's, you know, if you're gonna get a backdrop and dig a ditch, you know, if you've got a three and a four together, you'd just probably like do the whole street or something. There's things with, when you dig like that. There's things with when you dig like that and deal with mains, you have to go get a bunch of permits. So the engineer also said, you know, it's somewhat cheaper to do a larger project than a smaller one. You don't want to do a block at a time because it takes you two months to go walk live for all these permits and it costs money to apply for permits or, you know, and it's a single amount of money and time if you do such a larger.
So it's kind of, it's a scale a little bit.
Yeah, so I mean, you, you know, I mean, what we could do is, you know, plan out like a million dollars at a time and say we're going to do these two blocks this year and in three years we're going to do another two blocks. Or, you know, I, I'm not convinced there's a problem really. I don't know. So I, I, it's something we have to discuss and you know, Danny will be at budget next year, I guess, so. I mean, he's, he's said, you know, he, he's worried about it, of course, because he's the water guy. And it's not that I'm not worried about it. I just don't know how you come up with six million dollars. It'd take a lot of years to save it. And you wouldn't say six. Like I say, you would do a million dollars at a time or something. You gotta, you gotta dig everything up. You gotta shut off water devices. It's a big thing.
It's like the NFT kind of like do it when you have the money to do a, a project as opposed to you can't go to do things each year. You have to kind of build up and clear it that way.
We could, we could try to do a fund that has like a billion in it. Then if we were going to like replace a road or something, it'd be good to dig up the water pipe at the same time. You know, maybe something like that would be smart. So maybe we should put a fund together where we, you know, try to build up a million dollars and, and we could replace, we've kind of already got that. We've already got a water fund with like a million in it, I think, right, Sarah?
Yes.
And I think that's, I think that's more than we need in that fund. So, you know, we could, we could just try to build that up some more until we think, we should keep maybe like five hundred thousand in that fund or something. So maybe we should put another five hundred thousand in that fund and then we got a million dollars to replace the pipes. It's not, no, nobody has said for sure what we should do and I'm not sure myself, so. We're talking about more of the budget meeting. I mean, Hudson's always done really good at planning expenditures, you know, like saving for the water tower and stuff, but we should continue to do that. Now we're going to have this holy rivers downstream, right? So we, we probably shouldn't put money aside for this. The pipes are already fifty years old. I mean, how much longer could they possibly be okay? Another twenty, another thirty? I mean, they don't, they don't, they don't be okay forever, so. We thought, you know, that, that's what I should work on is try to figure out how long we think it would take us to save that money. Did it take us twenty years to save six million? You know, we probably will need to replace by then. We probably should start saving, so.
I'm sure, I'm sure more than twenty years, we would like to pat you on the back.
Start saving now. Yeah, I mean.
It would be eighteen million then.
Yeah, that's exactly right. We hope, we hope Sarah makes good money on any money you save, right? Yeah, we probably really should start saving, especially if we get a new revenue stream, right? We should save a bunch of this money aside. And make good money on it, so. It's another revenue stream for us too. If you ever talk about it, I guess.
Anybody have any, anyone have any questions for Joe? Uh, I'll move to public property, Natalie.
I'm just been working on the baseball stuff still. Registration for the little league kindergarten through third grade is still open until the twenty-first of March is when that closes. And then we'll form our team. We're up to thirty-three kids currently registered for that. We have, we've had a couple of businesses reach out about being sponsors and I haven't sent the sponsor letter yet because one of the businesses creates, makes shirts and does screen printing. And so we're talking with them about if they want, they're kind of interested in a bigger sponsorship and helping with the shirt felt together, so. Uh, kind of going back and forth between what they can do versus the benefit of having a different business on the back of different teams, I think. Uh, otherwise, yeah, the poles are going up out there and I'm going to get in contact with the Lions Club soon to talk about the shed and like what they, they have some things they're planning to give us, some of the equipment for the baseball program. Um, and just kind of once the weather's a little nicer, get up there and figure out what that is and where we're going to start, so.
Making progress on that. It will warm up eventually.
Yeah, I hope so.
All right, next on the agenda is liquor commissioner. I have nothing. Uh, we have no agenda moving to closed session. Uh, so if you have one question for Allison, uh, when are we due for another closed session minute meeting?
Probably soon. I'll check it.
We're, it's state law, though. We have to review those every X number of months, so I'll make sure we don't skip that. Lynn, do you know off the top of your head when the garbage contract should be renewed?
It's, it was a five-year contract.
Okay, in five.
So it's got.
We still have a couple of years then.
I think you put that on your calendar. You, you made a calendar of things with what your number. I think you.
Yeah, I started that and nothing ever got added to it. It was for things like that, so I will see if I can find that and. It was a, just a village of, a calendar of major village events like that, so we don't forget about that, so. Okay, uh, so we have nothing.
I'm looking up that, I'm, hold on, I'm sorry. I'm looking up that date for you. If you give me like two minutes, I'll, I can tell you when that garbage contract expires. It ends on October thirty-first, two thousand twenty-six.
Okay, so we got a year, a couple of months. Thank you, Pat.
You're welcome. I've been awful quiet. I figured I need to add something to the mixer.
Well, since we have you on the line, too, Pat, we, we talked in email about the water contract with Normal and I think we said on an email, just ignore it. Pat contacted them like four times, the Bloomington guys, to get us a new contract. And they don't respond. They, they respond to you, I think, saying they got the email, right? But they don't ever respond again.
Correct.
I mean, is that like a legal kind of thing? We just assume the old contract is in force even though it's expired?
Well, it, I, I think the old contract is, remains in force until either party terminates it, so. So I think we're covered under that. We wanted to kind of clean it up a little better and address some weaknesses in it, but, um, I'm not sure there's much we can do past what we already have. I mean, I can, if, if, I don't feel there's a liability risk by operating under the current agreement. The only other option I could be is, you know, if I have my paralegal email them every day when she walks in the office until they get back to substitively, they'll eventually get back to me because they'll get sick of the emails, but short of being an extreme annoyance, I'm not sure what else to do.
Yeah, I, I don't think, I don't think we think they'll, you know, hose us in any way. I mean, we're friendly with them, so I think it's fine. We're a very small amount of their water, so just so the board knows, I guess we give up on that. Trying to get, got to get with them because they're not replying.
Yep.
Was it like nineteen seventy-seven every time?
It's the original. I thought, and I thought it had something in it. It expires after some number of years. I thought that was actually been there somewhere, but I don't remember now. But I guess we'll just assume they, I mean, the lake's getting dry, right? I thought it the other day. It's like, oh shit, lake's going dry. They moved some of the water, but. So I, I guess, I guess we're fine. That's it.
Okay, does anyone have any other questions or comments for Pat? All right, does anyone have any additional business for a meeting tonight? Is that budget meeting at seven, seven o'clock in the place around next week, Thursday, isn't it? All right, and, uh, hopefully everyone will be there. Sarah, where are you at with getting the budget sheets ready?
Uh, Danny and I sat down today and went through all of his. I'm getting marks from you guys at some point here. I don't have the police yet. And Lynn and I are going to meet once I have all the numbers set, so. We're close, close as we can be right now.
I will be glad to sit down with anyone that's not familiar with how this process works and teach you everything I can, which isn't a lot, but police explain how, how to do this, so. Sarah would probably be a better person than me to cover that. So trying to set this up down with Sarah. Okay, uh, any additional business for tonight? Not, uh, entertaining motion to adjourn.
We're going to adjourn, is that a thing?
Home labor or Allison, roll call.
Joe Boy.
Yes.
Lynn Morris.
Yeah.
Lynn Norris.
Yeah.
Ashley Richard.
Yes.
Allison Maker.
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned. Thanks, everyone.